We'll call the Board of Commissioners meeting order at 10:02. All those able, please rise for the pleasure of the House.
My pleasure, Regent, to the right of the United States of America. Consider your public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any public here for comment for items not appearing on today's agenda? All right, seeing none, any additions to the agenda from the board?
None, I'm aware.
All right, as long as the meeting minutes are accurate, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the meetings that were held on September 23rd.
I will second that.
You have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the meetings held on September 23rd. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We talked a lot about volunteerism at our State of the County presentation a couple of weeks ago, and here we have one of the best examples of that in our Proclamation 47 proclaiming October 9th as a Day of Caring in Center County. And we have Celesta and Megan here from the United Way. You want them over here, don't you, Tim? Yeah, if you can come to the side.
Yeah, just join us at the table if you would. Tell us what's going on.
Yes.
Awesome.
How many years has this been going on? How many volunteers? How many charities? Lots of information.
Wow, how many years?
Thirty-two.
Twenty-two. Thirty-two years, so.
Which, to me, is incredible, you know, because you get, you have events that happen, you know, sometimes 10, 15 years, and they just kind of fizzle out.
Yeah.
But this, every year, there's still that enthusiasm, and people are excited to come out, which, to me, just speaks to this community and how giving and engaged people are, and how much they want to help these nonprofits who quietly do their work every day, serving thousands of people, and kind of fly under the radar, but people know, and they want to give back and help. But Celesta can give you more details.
The details. So let's see, on October 9th, you're gonna see, I think the one that impresses me the most is, Belfont Area High School has an initiative that their juniors and seniors come out for Day of Caring. So we work really hard to place about 400 students. Mr. Caruso, their vice principal, is exceptional at making this happen. We will be out. So through the streets of Belfont, you will see a large amount of high schoolers. Do not fret, they are doing good work. They will be at the Union Cemetery, which is a great place if anybody needs to volunteer. They will be at the library, they will be at the Miles Humes Historical Library, which has asked for people that are okay with lots of dust and moving lots of things.
Yeah.
So if that describes some of the projects today, if you are somewhere around Logan Street, I do have a little exception to October 9th, and that's based on the work, is Mark Con will be out here replacing a roof.
Wow.
So they have done this off and on for, what, the last seven or?
I think this is the sixth roof.
Yeah, and they will do this for Strawberry Fields, which, if anybody's a homeowner in the room and has replaced their roof, it's extraordinary. So if you see them out, thank them, and they are starting early. We have donations of tons of mulch that is heading our way. We have about six Strawberry Fields homes, we have some Ark Residential Homes. The Easter Seals is the hottest spot ever for people to want to go and work, so they're gonna have about 50 volunteers. The Youth Service Bureau, we are at Center Care, we are at Center Helps, we are at Center Safe. I like, was like, oh, which one, you know, just making sure we're not confusing them. So we're looking for a really great day, and it is amazing. People are in full force everywhere. You know, Center Furnace Mansion is, if someone tells me, well, I can't get out of work all day, I only have an hour, Mary will take you. She'll put you in the schedule, you can fly over there, you can eat your lunch, hurry and work, and then you can go back and have a little hour with someone. So we're ready to go.
So where did you say Gary Sinister was gonna be again?
Gary needs to be at at least five places throughout the day.
Okay.
He can come with us.
All right. Clear that up.
Yeah.
PNC, who is our sponsor and has been since this whole started, is again this year, and they asked us, typically we do a volunteer breakfast at the Jordan Center in the morning to get everybody up and ready and get going, but they asked us to switch it up a little bit this year, so we're doing an after-party at Champs, 4:30, I believe, to 6:30.
Four o'clock to six o'clock.
Four to six o'clock, sorry. So people that have been out working all day can come to Champs and have some food and drink and just socialize and talk about what they did all day, and I think that's gonna be a good time and a different, a little different spin on it, so.
Yeah, so I think our premise used to be always came to breakfast, and we would usher you out, holler and get to work, and this time, we will just celebrate a day well done.
It's gonna be fun.
Wonderful, well, we'd like to thank the, I think it usually approaches like a thousand-plus people, so we'd like to thank the thousand-plus people who will be participating in the United Way Day of Caring. We'd like to thank PNC Bank for sponsoring this since its beginnings, and the roughly 300 charities in Center County aren't like Center County government. They don't have a Cracker Jack Facilities Department. If something breaks, they live with it, and hopefully someday they'll raise enough money to fix it. Well, your group takes care of that by throwing skilled volunteers at the project with donations to make it happen. As you mentioned, you're talking roofs, cleaning, rearranging, painting, repairs, I believe there's a fair bit of yard work and landscaping going on.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Tremendous, and it's all volunteers working for other volunteers.
That's it.
Tremendous. I'll pass it over to Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, this is just such a great example of how our community can come together to, you know, help out organizations that do so much for our community in turn. And, you know, one of the things we've been emphasizing from the county level is, you know, the need for more volunteers to join all of these different nonprofits throughout the county, because they really do rely on volunteer, you know, organizing. So, you know, hopefully, some of the folks who come out for Day of Caring might find a organization that they'd be interested in volunteering with on a regular basis, but really great to, you know, just, this opportunity to set aside a day and the expectation being that, you know, there'll be people all over the county who are taking that day for this is really, it's pretty amazing, yeah. And keeping it going for 32 years.
Yeah.
It's great momentum.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks for all you do to organize this.
Sure. It's one of our favorite days.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Concepcion, Commissioner Dershow.
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't bring up one of my personal heroes, which is Colonel Russell, who his spirit and memory lives on for, hopefully forever, this project, but he was an amazing man.
Yes, he was.
Was very, very influential in the establishment of this project, and I just want to, once again, recognize not only a military hero, but a local hero as well.
Absolutely.
An amazing individual.
Yes.
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Dersham, and the county commissioners would like to urge the residents of Center County to come out for the Day of Caring and help dozens and dozens of charities in need, and I have an old model.
That is an old one.
I hear you got a new model coming up, but it's one of the most coveted charity t-shirts in the county.
It sure is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions from the press?
No more pancakes.
No more pancakes.
We were only seeing, like, about, you know, people really want to just come out and go to work, and so we really want to find a way to thank them, so that's why we're kind of switching it up a little bit, like, maybe somewhere different, and in the afternoon, I'll allow someone to say, I'll just stop in and say hi, and then go out. Not everybody's a morning person, Gary. Those pancakes just don't make it through everybody's day.
Thank you. Good question, and any other questions from the press? Unless there's anything else, I think we can take a motion.
I'll move then that we adopt Proclamation 47 of 2025 proclaiming October 9th, 2025, as a Day of Caring in Center County.
And I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Proclamation 47 proclaiming October 9th as a Day of Caring in Center County. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We'll come on up, and JJ will get our picture with the still fairly new camera.
Oh, you know, you like the pink one best, that's why.
The old blue teacher.
She always.
I heard they had real ones relying on green.
Yes.
How'd you hear that?
That's what kids are talking about.
You can't do that.
A little more towards State College, there we go.
My instinct college.
We want a center on Belfont.
Do you wanna, do you wanna flex the Day of Caring shirt?
I've got one flexed in right here.
They're changing the branding, so probably not.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, everyone smile.
Ready are you?
Ready are you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Hey, have a great day.
Yeah.
Have a safe, wonderful dawn.
See you later.
Thanks.
All right. So what day of the week is October 9th?
Not sure, it's usually a weekday.
Thursday.
Thursday? Aaron's on it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, moving on to contracts and authorizations, our deputy warden, Mike Woods, has one item for the correctional facility.
Yes, good morning, here before the board to request consideration for a contract renewal with Nicole Lucas to provide haircuts at the facility. Nikki has actually been cutting hair for the county for the past 20, 40 years, I found out this morning. She started back at the old jail in 2001. The contract would be at no cost to the county, with the funds being covered by the individual's account, or if they're inigent, then it'd be covered out of the commissary account. It would be a three-year agreement running from November 11th, 2025, through November 1st, 2028.
Great, well, thanks for presenting that, Mike, and we'd like to thank Nikki for her couple of decades now of dedicated service to helping preserve the dignity of our returning citizens at the correctional facility.
Yep.
Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, sounds good, that's amazing she's been doing this long, really appreciate that dedication.
Yeah, give her our best.
Yes.
Really appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, we really appreciate it, and I think since we appreciate it, let's just move that to consent agenda very quickly.
I'll move to add the contract with Nicole Lucas to next week's consent agenda.
And I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with Nicole Lucas to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Mike. And talking about our Cracker Jack Facilities Department, here's Jonathan with the Capitol Project.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. This morning, I'm asking for your consideration and approval of change orders with GM McCrosen for the procurement and installation of a roof hatch ladder and the infill of a ground floor trench in the amount of $9,609.20.
Great, well, thanks for bringing that up, Jonathan, and since this is, I think, our first public meeting since we had the open house at the Community Services Building, the commissioners would like to thank you, your staff, the staff of maintenance, and obviously, all the contractors for putting together such a fabulous-looking building that's also, at the moment, squeaky clean.
Yes, absolutely.
It was really nice, thank you.
You're welcome.
So where, this is at the Community Services Building?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Dersham?
No, I'm fine, thank you, sounds good.
I will move then to approve the change order with McCrosen.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the change orders with McCrosen. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries, great, thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we've got Dave here from our Transportation Department with two items.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you. I come and ask for consideration of the approval of a PennDOT Public Transportation Capital Grant Agreement for fiscal year 2024-2025 to be used for the purchase of vehicles for the shared ride transportation program. The contract total is $285,000, funded by state funding, so that was the first part of it. And the second part would be the consideration of approval of a contract with ROR School and Commercial Bus Sales for the purchase of two 2024 Ford Transit vans and with camera systems in them, and another 2025 Chrysler Voyager rear-entry conversion van, minivan, handicap-equipped. The contract total with ROR would be $296,722, which would be fully funded by PennDOT through the grant of $285,000 and the remaining $11,722, which they have so graciously agreed to cover that cost as well to give us 100% funding for this purchase.
Great, well, thanks for all the hard work on that, Dave, and I remember our meetings a bit over a year ago, when we were planning how would we handle the additional surge of assisting Belfont Borough residents, and pleasant surprise, CADA funding Center Region residents coming for county appointments.
Yes.
I know this was part of that plan, and I appreciate you finding a way to have it fully funded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and we thank the governor and the state legislators for those funds.
Absolutely, yes, but these vehicles are actually already available, so.
Oh, wow.
Once approved, we'll have a quick turnaround time in getting them, and it will allow us to remove a couple vehicles that are at the end of their useful life, that I really don't like to spend any more money on, but.
Right.
When you're limited, you have to keep them running, so it'll help us there as well on the back end with the additional cost of maintenance that we won't have to spend, so.
Right, and we also don't want to be inconveniencing citizens who book trips, and then the bus who are gonna put them on isn't working that way.
Correct, yes.
Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, that's good news, this will all be covered.
Yes.
Now, the camera systems, what, what does that do?
Well, the TSI camera systems gives us internal cameras for the purpose of any kind of issues that could arise by even a bad driver or a bad client. They are not, there's no audio, it's all video. And then we have external cameras as well that monitor entry of the vans through the lift and the steps, so in the case of somebody claiming they fell or anything, we have that to go back on. And we've proven to use the cameras a few times to justify claims either against us or against a client, that's helped us in handling the situations, yes.
Just curious.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave, any questions to the press on this purchase?
So the new buses are to replace aging buses, or do they reflect that maybe?
Increase in ridership?
A little bit of both, but to replace older buses, Gary, for the purpose of removing buses that we've had much longer than we normally do since COVID, and not being able to get buses as rapidly.
Does the Belfont service's ridership continue to increase, or?
Slight increase as we speak, yes, nothing overwhelming at this point, but there is an increase, I think every month it's increased, so, you know, people are realizing we're there and able and helping, and the majority of those trips at Belfont's funding are for employment, for the most part, the other people obviously qualify in other ways, but, yeah.
Very good question, Gary. Unless there's anything else, I think we can take a motion.
Then I'll move to approve transportation items one and two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the two items for transportation. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries, great, thank you, Dave.
Thank you all very much, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have Lea from Children and Youth with a contract for a company with Acutinade.
Yes, good morning. So before this morning, I am here to request for your consideration the contract renewal with People Are Us Community Residential Services. They provide foster care residential services to both dependent and delinquent youth. The contract total is for $160,000, with the state funding at $128,000 and the county share at $32,000, and this contract period would be for July 1st of 2025 through June 30th of 2026. People Are Us is a group home program located in the Philadelphia area. They have three different houses within Philadelphia that typically they are willing to consider are harder-to-place youth, and so they offer services in the group home environment, but then work to transition some youth into their independent living programs as well, so they provide a variety of services to both dependent and delinquent youth.
I very much appreciate them taking some of the more difficult youth.
Yes, absolutely.
That's very helpful. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
Thank you, it's a good explanation.
Commissioner Dersham?
No, thank you.
All right.
I'll move to add the contract with People Are Us Community Residential Services, Inc., to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with People Are Us Community Residential Services, Inc., to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries, great, thank you very much, Lea. And now we have Kathy from the Superdepartment Mental Health Intellectual Disability Early Intervention Drug and Alcohol, and we've got eight items.
But we'll make this quick.
All right.
But we do have a variety of items on the agenda this morning. The first item is our fiscal year 2425 fourth quarter drug and alcohol report. We ask that the board consider approving our fourth quarter fiscal report for drug and alcohol for the time period July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. This is the report that goes to the Department of Drug and Alcohol Program. It is unfortunately due before the other fiscal reports are due, but we have put together our numbers, and there are lots and lots of numbers that I could share, but just to keep it simple this morning, our total funding spent for drug and alcohol from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025 was $2,429,97. The portion that came from the Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs is $1,561,536. That's the majority of the funding for drug and alcohol. Other sources of funding, which includes the Human Services Block Grant funding, our PCCD grant, funding from Medicaid, funding from DUI fees that are collected, it totals $867,561, and out of that 2.4 million, the county contribution is $40,894. So we do our best to maximize other sources. The 40,000, almost $41,000 from the county is primarily match requirements for certain categories from the department and for the Human Services Block Grant funding. So we use those funds for some admin costs for case management services and to assist individuals who are uninsured or underinsured access treatment and recovery support and for prevention services. So the fiscal report indicates the funds that are spent by our office, the funds that are spent by each provider. We have spent every dollar that we received, with the exception of a few federal dollars, which we have until September 30th to spend, but otherwise, we ended up with a big old zero, we spent every dollar that we received.
Good, well, that's usually our goal at the county.
Yes.
Is to maximize services to the citizens while saving families, improving lives, and maybe not going too far overboard on the county match portion of it.
Exactly.
So that, that sounds great, and knock on wood really, really hard, one of the best measures of a drug and alcohol department is overdoses.
Right.
And in Center County, they're, they've always been low, and almost unbelievably now, thanks to your group, the many different nonprofits you work with, the providers you contract with, and the readily availability of Narcan, those numbers are numbers I don't think we've ever seen before, Steve.
It's hovering at about three or four, depending on which number you use.
Which is unbelievable, so that's, that's why I'm knocking on wood for that, because that, that would be tremendous if we finish the year at about half of normal numbers.
That would be great.
Last year was, I think, 14, so.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Significantly, significantly good this year.
Yeah, so, appreciate what, what you and your team are doing. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
No, thank you.
Steve, any, any additions?
No.
All right.
Then I'll move to approve the fiscal year 2425 fourth quarter drug and alcohol report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year 2425 fourth quarter drug and alcohol report. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries, and now you have seven other items, and I think they're pretty much all contracted, I don't know.
Yes, they, we have seven contract addendums for the board this morning. Three of them are for our drug and alcohol department, and four of them are for our mental health department. They are all for the time period July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. As we finalize our fiscal reports for the last fiscal year, we are identifying pending invoices that we are wrapping up for each of our providers, where we have eligible expenses that we can pay with funds that are remaining, and so we are pushing those dollars out to the providers, so again, we're not sending anything back to the state or to the feds, and maximizing those dollars for eligible costs and meeting the needs of individuals. So the first addendum is with Eagleview Personal Care Home to provide additional mental health community residential services. This increase is $160,000. This is for two new chip placements for individuals who are being placed from Danville State Hospital. This will increase their contract from $483,237 to $643,237. Most of that is state funding, and the county match portion is $29,653. The second addendum is with Oasis Life Care to provide additional mental health outpatient and psychiatric treatment services. This increase is $4,000 and will increase their contract from $200,684 to $204,684. Most of that is state funding, the county match portion is $9,436. The third contract is with PA Care LLC, doing business with State College Medical, to provide additional outpatient treatment, medication-assisted treatment, and care manage, management services. This is an increase of $5,214. Most of that is, I'm sorry, this increases their contract from $25,000 to $30,000 to 14,000, most of that is state funding, and the county match portion is $1,393. The next contract addendum is the second addendum for Strawberry Fields to provide additional targeted case management services. The increase is $1,003. This will increase their contract from $1,826,991 to $1,000, $1,827,994. Most of that is state funding, the county match portion is $84,271. The next addendum is the second addendum on the drug and alcohol side for the Center County Youth Service Bureau for additional. County Youth Service Bureau for additional performance based prevention services. This is an increase of $69,169. This will increase their drug and alcohol contract from $612,666 to $681,835. Most of that is state funding and federal funding. The county match portion is $61,594. This next contract addendum is the second addendum with Crossroads Counseling on the drug and alcohol side for outpatient treatment, medication assisted treatment, recovery support services, and case management services. The increase is $119,035. A portion of that is for jail services as well as community based services. This will increase their contract from $336,653 to $455,688. Majority of that is state funding, and the county match portion is $21,700. And then the last contract addendum is with the Center for Community Resources for additional mental health crisis intervention services. This increase is $2,000. It increases their contract from $50,000 to $52,000. The majority of that is state funding, and the county match portion is $2,397.
Great, well, thanks for covering those seven contract addendum Kathy. A lot of great county partners on that list, and probably hundreds and hundreds of county residents served and families assisted. So appreciate that. Commissioner Concepcion, anything on that?
No, good explanation. Just, yeah, grateful for the services they provide.
Thank you.
Commissioner Durson?
Thank you.
I'll move to add the MHIDEI DNA items two through eight to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the MHIDEI DNA items two through eight to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Got kind of a medium sized consent agenda. Thank you Kathy. I kind of like a medium sized consent agenda. Take just take a motion, I believe.
I'll move to approve this week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We have a number of appointments and reappointments for our authorities, boards, and commissions, speaking of volunteers.
Yep.
We've got, I think, at least one new volunteer on here, maybe two, and several people who are re-upping. So for the Center County Recycling and Refuge Authority, we have Cameron.
I have one.
Is it Fai?
Fai.
Oh, good. Cameron Fai, appointed to a term from September 30 of 2025 to December 31 of 2028. We appreciate Cameron being willing to serve. For the Housing Authority, Linda Marshall, which is a name Steve and I recognize, is being appointed to the Housing Authority. She ran housing.
There's a little bit about housing.
Yeah, she she knows a little bit about housing. She ran housing for Center County Planning for a number of years. And her appointment is September 30 of 2025 to January 31 of 2027. Great to see that Linda is re-engaging with county government. Wonderful. And then for the Agland Preservation Board, we have three reappointments. No, all of them either from my service on the board or being out in the community. So we have Thomas Bolden, Gillian Warner, and Joel Myers, all being appointed to a term of September 1, 2025 to August 31, 2028.
Lot of expertise there as well.
Lot of expertise there, too. Couple of, actually several people active in agriculture on the list, and we appreciate their expertise and their viewpoints on all the important topics from the Agland Preservation Board, where I think we're up to a crazy number of preserved farms now.
Yeah.
Well in the 60s, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
And, you know, adding more every year.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So unless there's any other questions.
I'll move to approve the ABC appointments and reappointments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ABC appointments and reappointments. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And thanks again for coming, Cameron. Moving on to the check run, we have a check run dated September 26. Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, the check that I'd like to highlight this week is for Crossroads Counseling. They're one of our important partners in drug and alcohol services in terms of providing case management and medication assisted treatment and other kinds of services to those in need. And with that, I would move that we approve the check run dated September 26.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the check run dated September 26. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. John, is there an administrator's report today?
Nothing to report at this time.
All right. Moving on to our reports and announcements, we do have an election coming up and I think some deadlines in the near future.
Yes, and we're seeing registrations coming in. So at this time in Center County, we have 101,789 registered voters in Center County. Of those, 41,230 are registered Democratic, 160 Green Party, 558 Libertarian, 15,774 with no affiliation, and 42,055 Republican voters. All of the other small parties come up to 2,012 voters, and our total number this week is up 47 from last week. Moving on to our precinct of the week, we're up to Precinct 17, State College Northeast. There are 520 registered voters at Precinct 17. They had a voter turnout of 28% at the May primary election. They vote at the Comfort Suites Executive Meeting Room at 132 Village Drive in State College, and we'd like to thank them for the use of that space for elections. That is our voter reg report.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Concepcion. Actually, I believe Cameron is staying here because you you have a new position here.
No, that's not Cameron.
It's not Cameron?
I'm not Cameron.
All right. All right. What was your little note there, Steve?
The note was, this, he is our new authority director for recycling.
Right, that's what I thought you were mentioning.
Yep.
So I don't know if you'd like to come to the podium and introduce yourself to the public?
Yeah, why don't you introduce yourself?
Yeah.
He had you confused.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's okay. I do it as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My name is Jason Ivey. Thank you for having me by the way.
Oh, great.
I'm the new executive director for the Center County Recycling and Refuge Authority. Took over for Ted O., as you guys all know, so he's he's got some big shoes that I need to fill, but anxiously jumping in, and I've been there about two months now, and just really, really enjoying it. And had a very warm reception from all the folks of Center County, and just looking forward to continuing and growing the organization, so.
Perfect, great.
I've had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Higgins at the PSCCU After Hours.
Yeah.
And met you earlier, but I had not met you in person, so I'll be sure to do that afterward.
Yeah, so thank you so much for coming, and, you know, we have a close relationship with the Center County Recycling Refuge Authority. It's not exactly an arm of Center County government, but we are closely affiliated, and I think we appoint a lot of your board members.
You do, you do. We're always here for you, so anything we can do to help, please, just ask us now.
Again, not patting Center County on the back too hard, but I think we are the only metro area in the United States where the citizens actually do all the sorting at the curbside.
This is what I understand, yes.
Yes.
This is true, so.
And you're on a very nice, clean facility, been there numerous times.
Perfect.
Yeah?
Perfect. Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. Any questions from the press?
Any thoughts on what you've seen so far? Have any ideas or changes? What brought you to Center County?
What brought me to Center County? I'm originally from Sunbury, and my my most recent job was running the Sunbury Municipal Authority. That authority was was a bit differently structured than this. There were five departments in that authority, which included sewer water and flood in addition to, in addition to recycling and refuse, so much broader authority. The opportunity here, obviously, it's it's a bigger authority, more focused on on two departments, which to me is ideal. You can kind of dial in things and get some projects and some structure to the organization that we're really looking forward to. So far, I'm finding the authorities kind of diving into some different things right now. We're looking at a glass sizing project.
Oh, cool.
The source that we we used to send our glass to, the owner has has retired. We've purchased that equipment, and we're actually looking to start up the sizing business here. Size glass is is more lucrative to sell than just the bottled glass and the metal glass that we require throughout our process, so looking forward to getting into that. We recently finished a solar project, which I'm sure everybody's aware of at this point. We have an after hours coming up in the on October 9. Please join us for that. That is from 5 to 7. So everybody is welcome to that. So just quite a few things going on at the authority right now.
Yeah.
Just looking forward to getting things rolling, so.
So you're not sending glass to Brockway anymore?
We sent it to a company called Recyclo. That's the company that we purchased the equipment from.
Okay.
I'm not 100% sure where Brendan is sending glass at this point. We have already suppliers for it, but from our standpoint, it would be nice to be a regional distributor of the glass, the size glass, so I think it's a great opportunity for us to dive into that.
Because so so many areas don't even recycle glass because of the difficulty involved.
Yeah, glass has been really tough. I know in in Sunbury, it was one of the more challenging recyclables to get rid of, and then we basically found an outlet. If we found an outlet that we'd take it, we would jump on it, because it just was not very lucrative, so this will give us a little bit different opportunity.
Great. I just have one last question.
Sure.
On a whiteout game, how much how much refuse is generated in a game like that?
Great question. I thought you were saying.
Do we know the do we know the number?
Yeah, we do. We've watched, I watched the home game games leading into this and the tonnage that comes about, the combined tonnage was about 105 tons.
Wow.
It's amazing.
That's probably 105.
I'm sorry?
Was it 105?
105 tons.
Or 105,000 pounds, probably, yeah.
105 tons, it can.
Yeah, we'd like.
It's a whole bunch, whatever.
Oh, that's a lot.
Yeah, it's an amazing amount, so.
Okay, now we know. Thank you.
I mean, 105 tons would be something like 210,000 pounds.
Yes, yeah, we do. Daily tonnage at the at the transfer station, by the way, is between 400 and 500 tons a day, so it gives you time to some respect for what that means.
Yeah, it's a big spike, yeah.
And the overwhelming majority of that's recycled, right?
A good portion of it is.
Good portion of it, yeah. Which is tremendous.
Good.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Any additional questions from the press? No?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Great. Well, thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Now, moving on to announcements, we have Chad, who will talk about additional items for the Center County's 225th Anniversary Presentation, Supporting and Serving Our Residents.
Yes, good morning. We have nine departments that we're going to talk about today, so going to be informative but succinct on those. First of all, we're going to start with is our Tax Assessment Department. This became a county department in February of 1958. County engaged with the firm to begin work to mapping parcels throughout the county. This work included field measurements to determine exact street locations. In the fall of 1958 was the first aerial photography of the county that was used to help map out the parcels as well. At the height of that operation, there was about 20 people working on that, because it took about two years to complete. And at the time, there were 21,877 parcels. One of the purposes of doing the assessment then reassessment was to bring assessments into the county rather than each municipality where they had been before. And this was to achieve uniformity in the assessment ratio. There have been six chief assessors since the department was created. There are currently about 60,000 parcels in our county, and the office has nine staff members working there. Continuing on with the tax theme, our Tax Claim and Collection Department, so the tax collection side has been assigned the responsibility for the collection of county real estate taxes for the home rule districts. So these are State College Borough, College Township, and Ferguson Township. And they assist and guide the elected tax collectors of Center County in performing their duties. The Tax Collection Office also renders assistance and guidance with the tax collectors in accordance with tax collection laws of Pennsylvania. The Tax Claim Office is a responsibility for collecting and distributing delinquent real estate taxes for the county municipalities and school districts. So to be compliant with real estate tax laws, they send out notices to all taxpayers whose real estate taxes have been returned to the office as unpaid. And then each September, they hold a tax sale for non-payment of taxes. Our GIS department, this interfaces with a lot of departments that we're going to talk about today. They were formed in 1994, and so this was created and staffed with a third-party RBA in guidance with Penn State. The county had a had a long-term company with this Penn State lab that they supplied three GIS staff for the county. In 2003, the GIS department was brought into the county as a to become officially run county department, having three staff members at the time. So some of their duties with the GIS is to maintain addressing for 911 data that gets ingested into the CAD system that the 911 dispatchers use. So currently, when someone calls 911, their address is verified against the GIS data to help locate it. The GIS department is responsible for maintaining software and tools that are utilized across tax assessment, 911, planning, sheriff's, coroner's office, conservation, and transportation. So currently, the department still has three people working in the GIS department, but there are four, six to people at any given time in other departments that directly work with GIS. So there are two staff members in tax assessment, there are three or four in planning, and a couple of 911 that use the GIS software as part of their daily duties. Next up is our Planning Office. So the Planning Office began as a county department in the early 1960s. And so the mission of the Planning Community Development Office provides professional planning services to citizens, communities, and municipalities across Center County. There are a lot of different programs and missions that they carry out. One is preparing and updating the county comprehensive plan, which includes information about the county's population, economy, housing, emergency medical services, land use, agriculture, and historical preservation. They also are responsible for administering the county's subdivision and land development ordinance, as well as the Agricultural Land Preservation Board. They work in assisting the county's 35 municipalities with preparing, modifying, and reviewing their comprehensive plans as well. Center County Planning Office also provides staffing support for the Center County Metropolitan Planning Organization and for administering the county's first time home buyer program. Now we're going to talk about our Conservation District. So the Center County was declared a Conservation District in 1954 by the Board of Commissioners. This was done at the request of farmers and other citizens that had an interest in conserving our county's soil and water resources. This was at the time the 30th Conservation District in Pennsylvania. In 1964, the county hired its first Conservation District employee. Early work with their district focused on assisting landowners, primarily with agriculture, planning, implementation, and conservation services of the soil. In 1986, the county became part of the Chesapeake Bay Program, opening up funding resources for implementation of practices within local farms. Now, the Conservation District has nine full-time employees and two part-time employees. The staff review and authorize 50 construction permits and 40 stream encroachments per year. Now we'll move to one of our elected offices, which is the Office of the Treasurer. So this office has been around since the foundings of the county. Our first treasurers up until 1841 were appointed by the Center County Commissioners. Starting in 1841, this became an elected position. So this office receives and disperses county monies that are prescribed by the county controller and the county commissioners. They work with other county offices to facilitate the receipt and dispersment of county funds on a daily basis, distribute payroll checks for about 550 employees, as well as generating the monthly expense checks. This office also acts as an agent of the state in the sale of hunting, fishing, and dog licenses, as well as sportsman's rifle permits, bingo licenses, small games of chance, and special raffle permits as well. There have been 63 individual. There have been 63 individuals that have served the county in the treasurer role in the last.
Did you mention the hotel tax in there?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Hotel tax as well, so they're the agent for receiving hotel tax, yes. Next up is our Weights and Measures Office. So this is an office that started in 1911 and currently has one employee, who, who's a sealer of, of weights and measures. This department is responsible for inspecting and monitoring all transaction in which a commodity or service is, is being sold by a weight or some type of measuring device. So this department's purpose is to ensure the rights of the consumers are protected from fraud or unintentional error. It also helps protect business owners in detecting errors that may be affecting them in negative way as well. So their duties include inspecting various types of weighing and measuring devices, so small-scale capacities, platform and hopper scales, point-of-sale systems, fuel motor devices, so they, and firewood as well. So firewood is, Ron, I'm going to say, is, is sold by the measurement of a cord or a fraction of a cord. So last year, he participated in, or conducted over 300 inspections. That included 1,500 grades of fuel and 650 commercial scales. Our Elections Office, so we talked about voter registration a little bit ago. The first election in Center County was held October 22nd, 1800, and this was done to choose our, our first officers. The population of the county at the time was 4,112. And throughout the years, the number of population and ballots cast grew. In 1819, there was about 1,200 ballots cast in that election, and we had a population of about 13,000. In 1880, there was 8,318 ballots cast in that presidential election. Our county population was about 38,000. In 1923, we had over 13,000 ballots cast. In 1963, we had 20,000 ballots cast. In the 1960s, the voter registration and elections duties were handled by the Office of the Commissioners. They would have staff go out, find the poll workers, polling locations, program the ballots in the computer. The Election Department would go door-to-door with a typewriter and register people to vote, and then each commissioner were assigned precincts that they would deliver a metal ballot box containing all the ballot material, the precincts they were assigned.
You have one of those, don't you, Steve?
A whole bunch of them.
Yeah.
Yep. And then this most previous election, there was about 80,000 ballots cast, kind of see, see the growth over time. And to conclude with our last office today is the Office of the Coroner. This office has been around since the foundings of the county, so their responsibilities are complex and multifaceted. By state law, it's responsible to investigate and determine the circumstance, manner, and cause of deaths within its jurisdiction. And so those inquiries may require review of medical records, family members, witnesses, and upon completion of their test, the office analyzes the results to determine the cause of deaths. They also collect evidence that may be used in prosecution if need be. They're responsible for notification of next of kin and securing personal property of the deceased and are, work closely with numerous medical and law enforcement agencies across the county. So those are our departments that we, additional departments that provide public services.
Great. Well, thanks for covering those, Chad. I know in bigger counties, sometimes tax claim and tax collection are even different departments.
Yes.
So you covered roughly nine to 10 of the 52 or so.
Yes, yeah.
County department slash budget areas. Appreciate that. I was kind of surprised that so many of them were, started much later than I would have thought.
Yes.
The 60s and the 80s and the 90s.
Yeah.
Kind of surprising.
Yeah.
Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
No, it's really interesting to know how gradually these departments kind of, you know, became part of county government or, you know, I had, you know, knowing that tax assessment had been part of the municipal level until the 50s is quite interesting.
That is, yeah. They wanted to kind of make things uniform and bring it in-house, and they have the original, many of the original property cards that they created in 1960 are still, are up in, they're all up in tax assessment, and many are, are still referenced today.
Mr. Dershowitz?
I'm just glad we don't have to drag typewriters around the red room.
Yeah. And big metal boxes to put the ballots in. Wow.
There you go.
Times, times have changed. Now elections is its own department with some nice dedicated space.
A lot more complicated than it used to be.
A lot more complicated. They've got some nice dedicated space now at the community services building. Any questions from the press on those items? No? All right. Moving on, thank you so much, Chad.
Yes, thank you.
Obviously, a lot of research.
That's neat.
A lot of work. John, do we have any executive sessions to report or hold?
The board met in executive session on September 23rd from 2:34 PM to 3:03 PM to discuss personnel and legal matters, and we are requesting an executive session to follow this meeting to discuss legal matters as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John. The, our public meeting schedule, this Thursday, October 2nd, it doesn't feel like it's October, but obviously it is. Salary Board and Board of Commissioners combined meeting at 10:00, one of many budget work sessions at 1:30. And then next week, Tuesday, the 7th, Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:00, and another budget work session at 1:00. We'll take questions from the press.
The government potentially shutting down at midnight tonight, is the county preparing for that in any way?
Well, we're already not being paid by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania going on 90 or 91 days now. I suppose when it rains, it pours. Fortunately, Center County Government has been very pessimistic in its budget assumptions, and we've managed our funds very carefully. So we have not closed senior centers, unlike many other counties now, and we do not have county staff on rotating furloughs of two weeks on and two weeks off like several other counties now. We're also currently providing all services to all citizens and continue at this point, knock on wood, to be able to pay all of our partners and contractors through the end of the year. Fortunately, the direct federal funding to county government is in the range of just a couple million, so we'll weather that in the short term, too. I don't know if there was anything else the other commissioners wanted to mention on that. So, good question. We've kind of prepared for it. When the state government doesn't deliver a budget on time eight years out of 10, or I think something like 12 or 13 out of the prior 25, you unfortunately get used to it, but we'll deliver our 225th budget on time in mid to late December this year. Any other questions? No? Great. Well, I think we need a motion to go, move into executive session, right, John?
Yes.
Move that we enter executive session.
I will second that.
We have a motion to enter executive session and seconded at 10:58. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We'll enter executive session.